All right, it's seven oh two. I'll call the regular meeting of the board of selectmen to order. Our first item of business is pledge allegiance. How do you want to leave?
Sure.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the great power of the West. One hundred and fifty. End of this whole, literally, and that's the wrong.
Okay. Murray will not be with us tonight, so the the four members here, the support selection that are here in the room are what we'll have for attendance this evening. Our first item or our next item of business is approval of meeting minutes from our July twentieth twenty twenty three meal.
Move to approve the Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes from July twentieth twenty twenty three as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Are there any? Is there any discussion or any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Public participation, this is one of two opportunities for members of the public to address the Board of Selectmen. You would like to do so, please identify yourself by your name and your address and then state the business. First, I'll ask if there's anybody here in the room who would like to do so, and then I'll offer the same opportunity to anybody who's with us online. Sign out. Zoom issue.
Recording.
So it is zoom issue because I was signed on here too when I just used. Nonetheless, I got the recording someplace, so we should be good. Is there anybody here who would like to address members of the board? Is there anyone online who would like to address members of the board? Seeing none, there will be another opportunity later in the meeting. I think following the call of the agenda, I don't know any communications, resignations, reappointments or new appointments. I would like to. Table agenda items eight A and nine A until after executive session. We can have a motion, please.
Second.
Is a motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. That brings us to the discussion and possible approval of the MOU between the town scout hall building committee. There have been a couple of emails going back and forth about this. Today. So if you guys have checked your emails, that information will be there for you. I have what I forwarded along. If you want to take the hard copies of it. What I have is the memorandum. That's that's been usually approved by the scout hall building committee, needs to be approved by us. And there is a company nap that goes with it. Oh, that was. Paul, God had one change on the end, and it pertains to the what's gonna be the third amendment to the lease. And it's just noting in the MOU that that needs to be authorized.
This second amendment will not be allowed.
Correct. Okay, but it still is filed, so it becomes the action.
The map I have.
Okay, I can accept that.
For folks curious about the map, that was something that was commissioned by the scout hall building committee in October of last year. And it outlines the areas of control as well as potential for expansion. If we were to add a second soccer field into the currently wooded area along the west, the eastern side of the property. The MOU is substantially similar to the one that was adopted in twenty twenty two, but as Paul said, because the funding hadn't been secured by the end of the year. It was effectively vacated, so this largely reflects that. Two changes to it are the addition of agenda or of MOU items eight and nine, which reference the map by job number and dates. And the requirement that there be a third amendment to the lease dated the twenty to the lease to the document dated the twenty fifth of April twenty twenty two thousand and two. Any discussion?
As far as fees collected from rentals, is the town setting the fee rate or is that the scout hall building?
Many? No, the control of the building would revert to us, so that was set by us, and funds would be kept in an onlancing fund, so that it's separate from the general fund to be used to support community services broken.
So I guess the only question I have is does this other building? Is that what is considered there right away on to property section that they're still gonna control the lease on?
You're looking here?
Yeah.
They already own that. That is not part of the parcel.
Right.
So they have a right of way that exists currently, but they have frontage that exists currently.
Right.
That's not part of the deal. That is, they retain ownership of that. That is their property.
Okay.
Whereas the the rest of the parcel is town property that is leased to them. They actually own that out. Paul, if you have any comments along the way here too, you're certainly welcome to interject.
That that little right of way and that two acre parcel is not in use at the moment.
Okay.
It just exists.
It's wooded and looks like the rest of the parcel, right? Pretty much. Other questions, comments, concerns?
Look, just a little confused. What's the third amendment?
This, the third amendment, so we had to file an amendment to the lease that was advised by the MOU in the form. That amendment to the lease was also predicated upon the securing the funding by the end of the year, which which didn't happen, so that that in forty, the lease terms are decided by the terms of the MOU advised by the term. And they're incorporating with that and whatever, you know, real estate legal language, Josh determines needs to be included there, but the MOU advises the amount.
Now, the second amendment included a map. So this map would be part of it.
It would supersede it, yeah.
And the MOU was included in that amendment to the lease, so it's all become one dot.
Right. Exactly.
But we're gonna, so what's gonna be in the third amendment?
Well, the second amendment is null and void.
It's gonna effectively reiterate the second amendment representing the the dates and the securing of the funding that happened subsequent to the expiration.
And that never took part, took place because the vote didn't pass at that time, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I was like, I've spent.
We're rerunning exactly what we did in the late summer, early fall, updating the the language just to include to include the reference to the newly updated map instead of the hand drawn one that was on there originally. And that that's it, really. I mean, otherwise it is materially the same.
Right, yeah, since I was going back last night trying to compare things and see what we had done and some time had passed, but I thanks for the clarifications. Because the vote didn't initially pass up the when we had done this previously, now we need to redo it again.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. And we'll be doing this third amendment coming up shortly.
Yeah, there are two ways to do that. Josh, I think I forwarded you the correspondence. He he either suggested that you authorize me to sign that amendment inclusive of this and any legal language that's necessary. Or personally, I'm more comfortable just bringing it back here to.
Yeah. I'd rather you bring it back to us.
No, but I I do need authorization on the MOU, so I can start that next step. Which is given, given, right?
Correct.
Move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the town of East Windsor and the scout hall building committee. Effective August third and authorize the first selectmen to sign the document.
Second.
Discussion. All fair.
Aye.
Suppose. Okay.
So. But the lease amendment itself still requires the two signatures, witnesses and all that type of thing. That doesn't change.
Correct. Okay. It's gonna look substantially similar to the.
I understand. It just means more give time. More paperwork. It's not effective until it's actually filed.
Well, yeah, we can talk about that, you know. We can talk tomorrow.
Fine. Really? Sounds good. No complaint.
But on the same topic, then what would be the next steps as far as moving forward with the project?
So, okay, long story long, the the Congress approved the funding in the twenty twenty FY twenty twenty three budget. We still need to satisfy all of the obligations that USDA has in order to release the funds. We have done that. It's in the review process. So what is they they release from their corporate headquarters to the state offices once a month, the funding for the various projects that have been approved. Ours is scheduled at this point to be in the August tranche of funding, which would be sometime in the third week of August. The federal government does whatever the federal government does, so that is all very loose timeline, but the the current timeline is that the funding is released to the state office this month, at which point we are then free and clear to put the project out to bid.
Okay.
So if all goes according to plan by Labor Day, the the project will be out to bid.
Okay. Thank you to that.
All right, moving right along. CIP. Adam, come on. Hi, how are you? Good. So your committee has put together these recommendations based on the available funding. Their their ranks. Any editorializing you want to do about the movies?
I think I did some editorializing when I sent you the original file last fall when we were done, just going over the total list. Three dozen projects came before us. Total value of those projects to fund them all was nearly sixteen million. Some of that was for multiple years for the upcoming fiscal year, and again, this is back in the fall, so for this coming fiscal year. It's about seven point one million. So that was our initial task, if you will, starting with seven point one million dollars of past. We went through that, as Jason said, we ranked them deliberated, went through a a number of different steps to come up with the final list of one point nine million. After the budget passed, we were given a final allocation shown on the screen here of one point one eight eight million. We met again, took the original one point nine list that we came up with and was able to get that down to the one point one eight eight million. As far as editorializing, I can go through the list if you want. I can answer any questions that you have on them. You know, it's it's a tough task to get them all the way down, to get the number all the way down to one point one eight eight. Some projects didn't make the list. That's not to say they aren't important or something we should be doing. It's just you can only go so far. Some projects were only partially funded. Again, that's not to say they're only partially valuable. It's just the money only goes so far as we all know. So I can go into the details of each one if you like, answer specific questions on each one or?
Sure. If I could make a motion to pass it, we can all go home. I have some thoughts on this and, well, please continue.
We do need some input on changes. You know, we started this process September, always in the teens, I think of last fall. Some things fall off the list. They're, you know, funded by other alternate means. They no longer need to be funded, whatever the case is, so if you had input on any of those that should come off the list, we need your knowledge to to help us grow that new relist.
And you you, this is a mother too old.
Two months old, yes.
Yes. So there there have been some moving parts along the way where circumstances have changed, not the least of which, and one of the reasons why Chief Carl is here is is police cruisers. And I'll talk about that in a second and and he can chime in as well. Can you explain? Well, please.
Okay. Well, I'll go down a list real quick here. The GIS system. I guess one important factor when we do our list of projects here is the first thing we ask is, is it a law, is it a rule, is it a mandate? So something like some of these items here, we pretty much have to do, so kind of keep that in the back of your mind, so updating the GIS system came out near the top. It's important. It's used by, I use it, it's used by quite a few people from town employees to citizens like myself. So we funded that. The police department vehicles was number two. I guess we can table that, but we were funding two of those. Right below that is a police locker room. There's a ton of discussion on this one, a lot centered around what was going on at Scout Hall and moving all the different departments or buildings, et cetera. We came up with a recommendation of fifty thousand. The project request was about a hundred fifty thousand. It's one of those projects where I was kind of referencing before where it's not that it's not worthwhile, but the money only goes so far, so we thought fifty thousand would get the process going.
Can I interrupt that? What's the current situation with that now?
What do you have for female staff?
We have one spare locker.
Okay.
Once, yeah, because we've lost a female, we added one, so there's one spare locker.
One spare locker and one one curving.
Yes, and well, we have, we have four, four vacancies for positions in the department. I said it before and I'll say it again, females are outperformed males, so who actually goes in there? It it depends on our testing process. We have one spare locker, but the locker room is small, the the facilities are not are not adequate, and we have issues when it comes to our childbearing bearing females.
Thanks.
But fifty thousand dollars doesn't build a locker room, you know, so.
I could use your help with the terminology here, but I just want to kind of note that if any of these projects are refunded, the the money is set aside for them is my understanding, so it's not.
It's transferred into a capital on a recurring line.
So that's what I was looking for your help on.
And it reverts to the control of the department head who oversees that that particular line.
So it's not a one point one eight eight million dollar allocation to a general account and, you know.
The one point eight eight million is a direct allocation to a general account. Your recommendation and our approval of your recommendations or alterations to them will dictate to one fund though in the C and R aspect of our budget, those ones are transferred to, at which point they fall under the control of the relevant department.
That's what I was trying to say. They're they're protected.
All right, yeah. That's a, well, they're protected up to the point where the board of finance decides they want to move it someplace else, but that.
Okay, yeah.
You know, we we do that when a project closes out and there is a, you know, I mean, if you're doing a you know, the nurses station at the the middle school is an example, and there's twelve hundred bucks left over. You're not gonna do anything with twelve hundred bucks for the nurses station upgrade. You know, it's project specific, so they close that out and they put it in C and R.
So a situation with any of these projects or funding a a third of it, just to get it started. That money is set aside for that department or group or.
That project, right.
Yeah.
Project specific.
Okay.
So, for example, there's a bunch of things on on here for public works, so there you you're doing four hundred and fifty thousand for payment management and another fifteen thousand for vehicle replacement. They can't move the payment money to the vehicle line without the board of finance to manage it. It's, but they can carry that payment management year to year to year to year until it's depleted.
It's just the comment about, you know, the fifty thousand isn't it a build a locker room? But it could be parked for that purpose.
That's true.
Or any, you know, any project that we're talking about that's only partially funded. I think it's just important to to point that out that it'll be protected or held for them. Public Works. Vehicle replacement and equipment. It's just so many of them that if we don't fund this, it falls behind so incredibly quickly, so the request was three hundred thousand. The best we could come up with was two hundred and fifty thousand. Almost an ongoing project, really. The revaluation, that's what I mentioned at the top, that's state mandated, so, you know, we're gonna fund that as we need to. Broadbrook Elementary School boilers, the boilers have passed their life expectancy, so the request was two hundred and fifty thousand. We funded it at two hundred thousand. You just mentioned pavement management. The request was a million. Even that I don't think is enough to get ahead. I'm not even sure we're even just breaking even with that, but we funded it. Our request is four hundred and fifty thousand. Similar story with ongoing maintenance for ton weight drainage. Asked a hundred and fifty thousand, we funded it at fifty. And the chip ceiling in the for the roads, seventy five thousand was asked, zero was funded in the second iteration, so a lot from Public Works, and we had to cut quite a bit, especially from pavement management. That was almost half of what we cut. Vehicle replacement program for town property. That's another one where we need to be careful because if there's there's no funding, sometimes we get a state grant. And if there's no money to even apply for that, we lose out on a great opportunity, so fifteen thousand that we recommended, we were sure that that would be at least enough to apply for a grant and kind of pull that opportunity for us. Public record scanning, this has been ongoing. The request was for fifty thousand. We went for seventeen thousand.
That finishes one department, right?
Yes.
But doesn't start a second one.
Correct.
I think that's right.
Yeah, yeah, I have the details in that giant binder.
I think it finishes planning and doesn't start building.
That sounds familiar, yeah. It's only proportion for sure. EPW facility equipment, the ask was twenty thousand. This last iteration, we were not able to fund that. And the last one, park and rec park amenities, replace concrete pads for gazebo space. We allocated ten thousand for that. So that's your total of one point one eight eight. And again, there's a pretty good sized list of projects that are really important to move this sound forward that we just can't touch with one point one million, and that's the highest number that I can recall in four or five years.
Yeah, that's that's, I think, more than that. And that that was.
Almost twenty five percent. Reached a million in
that ten years.
And there are a couple of the projects that we thought bonding might be a better way to go. And again, keep in mind, we're putting this together back in the fall, so a lot of things have changed, but senior center of Robert Fire Department roof replacement, public works building roof replacement, additional pavement management and high school track replacement were ideas that we had, requests that came into us that we thought bonding might be a better way to go for those. Right? Anyone else?
Yes, sir. Could I clarify myself? Yep, my comment about, first of all, I think you guys do an amazing job, and there's not a point in me going out loud. My comment, I should have told them it worked better. It was not a reflection of what you guys do.
Oh, I didn't take it that way.
No, no, I just want to make sure I clarify it for them.
Okay.
I don't think you can build a locker for a hundred fifty thousand, because the problem that you have with police departments, where does it go? It's a footprint thing. And the more places you move, you have to, we have to encroach on other spaces, and then when you start moving walls and stuff like that, and I'm not an engineer, but I don't think we can do it for for what that I think is a greater discussion about what needs to happen at the footprint of the police department. So the fifty thousand dollars absolutely can go in and out recurring, and we appreciate all that, because it does get us started. But it's not a reflection of what you guys, you guys have an impossible task. I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to. So I appreciate all the work you did.
Thank you.
Could we table the, I'm the police department vehicles, what's?
Well, so so the chief and I spoke about that, and he I took Adam's sheet and I I made some recommended changes to it to reflect the the changing dynamics since this document was created. So the the chief is in. The chief can get two cruisers fully stocked for another ten thousand dollars, so or twelve thousand four hundred and seventy two dollars. And they're in stock. He can get them within the next six weeks so that they would be here ready to that's but that bikini is all the hundred eight thousand four hundred and seventy two dollars in order to do that. Ninety six thousand doesn't get that done, so that means we would get one cruiser instead of two. Jump in anytime I'm getting this wrong, so you're correct. So because the price of nothing is cheaper later than it is now. That seemed to be a pretty smart thing to do, considering how much is are the changing, are are the prices for cruisers changing for next year's model?
So the the prices that are coming out in a couple of weeks, so twenty twenty four, they're ten thousand dollars higher. So what we were at thirty eight thousand, thirty eight thousand, or now forty 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 four nine thousand. Of course, we didn't put in for that one with the C I P O issue, so I was able to procure a promise of getting two vehicles, twenty twenty three vehicles at the at the twenty twenty three price of the thirty eight, thirty nine thousand dollars, and that's what I'm trying to go for, which got out before those vehicles, it's a little, they're a little over fifty thousand, so it was just in a lonely.
Right, so we can accomplish the the two cruiser acquisition this year if we if we move twelve thousand four hundred and seventy two dollars into that line. So where do you get that? The the locker room discussion, although that is necessary, it is a smaller piece of a larger problem, which is what is the footprint of that whole building going to look like when we're done, and it seems penny wide, actually doesn't seem penny wise. It seems penny foolish and pound foolish to be moving walls around when we don't know where the walls will need to be once we're out of it. So the chief and I talked about this and and I'm gonna speak for you, but please go ahead. I'm speaking out of turn. That it does make sense to to forego that this year to the benefit of these other projects because we don't yet know what the footprint of that building is going to look like when it's a more in a more permanent status, status. Is that fair to say?
That's that's very accurate, okay.
So the where else to, so the fifty thousand. The other thing is I talked to Joe and he thinks that they have enough in GIS now to continue doing what they need to be doing to meet their mandate. They have about ninety five thousand, I think, in that C I P line. So repurposing that ten thousand to the vehicle line effectively accomplishes what Chief Carl needs. Repurposing the locker room funding to the public works vehicle line allows us to actually get the public works vehicle instead of just eighty percent of a public works vehicle that is going to cost more next year. So those are, that's the thought that that I had put into this. It's for discussion sake. It's not to be in any, I'm not trying to skirt anything. I'm laying all the cards on the table with why I think the way that I do. And I talked to the relevant department heads about what they think their needs are now and whether whether this jives with where they are, that that is what it is. So I lay that out there for comments from you, for comments from the board, and what do you guys want to do? But we have the the math's gotta work. In the meantime, we're gonna try to fix my vision.
I'll say, and I obviously can't speak for the committee at this point because I'm just up here solo, but we did talk quite a bit about the vehicles and we try and fund for two every year because that just seems to be the way the requests come in, and we've done one, one and a half before, but then the following year you're trying to make up, so two vehicles, you know, I I think is something the committee would support, again, not speaking for them. And also for the locker room. And also for the locker room, I mentioned before, that was discussed quite a bit, so. Um I would feel comfortable with switching that around for that reason. So I don't want to have any concerns, I'm speaking for myself. Makes sense to me.
Yeah, no, I I I said before, we had a conversation that, you know, the fifty thousand dollars. Gets you all the way through the dump trucker vehicle, and that's that's fine, because it doesn't. It doesn't matter, you can market there, but it doesn't benefit me, and I don't know. How much more we would need, and it like you said, it just fools the market there now, and we're gonna have to. To talk about a greater discussion about the the whole.
But but does that money, I mean, fifty thousand doesn't get you a locker room, but does fifty thousand get through the engineering to figure out? How to actually move everything around and get a plan that we can. You know, go for grants, get a price on that kind of stuff.
The the community center engineering was a hundred and four thousand dollars or something like that.
It's a bigger project, but. I mean. You know, we're like, if we take it all out and do nothing, then then we have no money to do what we need to do, which I agree is make an actual plan. So I'm low concerned with that, and then the G I S, and and I agree, the two cars, we gotta figure out a way to do that. Uh because it's. You know, more efficient that way, um save some money, but. Um and then G I S, G S, our G I S is good, but it's not great, and and. I disagree that we are where we need to be with it. Uh we just approved the wetlands map. Uh about six or eight months ago, and it's not accurate.
Let me just say, if I said that we're where we need to be, I mis I misstated, we have the funds to be where we need to be, we're sitting on ninety-five thousand dollars. Um so we.
There's a lot there that we aren't doing that we could and should be doing, I mean, let's not forget, like, G I S is the underpinning of everything we do, whether it's. Public safety, planning and zoning, wetlands. Taxes, you name it, you know, so I. I I'm not crazy about shorting that either, and I would like to see, you know, a little bit more activity there. I think I make that speech every year, that we need to do better with our G I S, so so, you know, hate to throw a wrench in the works. And and the money's gotta come from somewhere, but um. Uh you know, I I think if we're not going to put money away for the locker rooms, we need to put money away. To plan for what we're gonna do there, because it is, it's a mess over there, and. It's not gonna get better with time, we have the whole annex building that we just. Ignore the fact that it looks like heck and should be, something should be done, right, so we need to. Maybe think about that, and maybe this is not the way, maybe you can't say we're gonna use this for locker rooms, but use it for making a plan, maybe that's kind of, you can't do that, so. But if we don't.
We could move it to town properties for, and we keep in mind, we have budgeted money still. For uh planning in town properties. That's we still have a hundred thousand dollars in that budget. Um so. You wanna put more into a C N R fund for that, you know, we can do that, but we have operating funds for that purpose already.
Okay. Fair enough. Although I'm sure that's been spent four different ways already, you talk depending on which department.
It's it's August third.
In somebody's mind, it's spent.
Well, all right, so what do you, what do you guys want to do, the these? So this is their recommended column, green is their recommended column, blue is is the changes that I made in consultation with department staff. Um although this was. So.
I I forget, I definitely only barely remember, what's the the? The story behind the the concrete pads, there's ten grand in there. Is that is that really that important right now?
Um so if you've been to the park and you've seen the gazebo that's by the splash pad. Um those, the padding for that is about five thousand dollars a piece, so that would be for two, two gazebo, uh two gazebos similar to that. Where? I don't know where, at the park, but I don't know where specifically, could be by up by the where the playground's gonna be, I don't know.
Yeah, and for me. I want to second guess the the, you know, the C I P team, but if we're gonna start moving money around. I'd take the ten from there rather than from the G I S.
Well, there's only.
Well, what if the money for the. For the police vehicles came from the locker?
That's kind of how I had it done the the first time.
And then you're not touching G I S and you're not touching gazebo.
Well, to Alan's point with the locker rooms, this is an issue that we've had for years now, yet we continue to do nothing about it. So I would like to see something, whether it is. For engineering or a plan to move forward or something, I I mean, if we just keep ignoring it and. Kicking the can down the road, the the problem is still there, and we're we're doing nothing to work towards rectifying it.
And I agree with that one hundred percent, however, like Jason said. If if we're these plans that we need, which we do first, engineering plans, there's money in. A fund for doing that. And you can't do anything without plans.
Well, okay, I I understand that, but I'd like us to.
We also don't know, so that's go, just full disclosure, those are operating funds. We don't know that we're gonna be in a position in this fiscal year. To be using those, I mean, probably we will, but we don't know that.
And then as far as public works, what? Vehicle is it that we would be purchasing a dump truck, okay?
So then if you talk about the weighted value. Uh that C I P, that I know they they put, they've got quite the little formula that works there. The concrete pads for the gazebos are a hundred and seventy-seven, G I S is two thousand twenty. And so I'm gonna take ten grand, but I'll probably take it from the least valuable product.
So I have a formula done up so that we can balance out the eleven, one eighty-eight. Uh you tell me where you want, what you want the cells to say, and I will make them say them. The the blue as it stands. Substantially represents what the C I P committee recommended with the the small alterations that that I talked about from staff recommendations.
Yeah, I'm not interested in changing the G I S system at all.
I'm I'm not either.
Um but I have another big one here. Uh and maybe it's a different school, but I thought the boilers were done. Uh I I thought that was the case too.
So it's a different school?
No, it's the elementary school.
So they only got half done?
Only one got done, there's the bank.
Okay. Okay. I think I asked that same question during budget, excuse me, yeah.
And just for clarification with the senior buses, how how many new ones do we currently have? Or how, I know we were in the process, we did get a grant, correct?
We got a grant, we got the the fifty-three-ten grant, we just, we found out about that about two weeks ago. Um that was a a late addition and quite a surprise considering the states said that they weren't awarding those, and then they did.
Mm-hmm.
Um we uh paid for one through our book, and we got a legislative earmark through. Um the Department of Aging and Disability Services, so we're, although it's going to be staggered, we'll be in a position to replace all three of them. But that town property vehicle replacement doesn't just fund. It also funds anytime we need to replace a town vehicle, so for example, um if the. Uh pool car needs to be replaced, if the uh one of the parking wreck uh. S U Bs needs to be replaced, if the building officials garden to be replaced, that's all of those things are paid for out of the town view, town properties vehicle replacement.
Okay. Not in most cases, parks and ricks got left over.
Often, but not always, so for example, uh two years ago, we bought a mini van.
Yeah.
Um it has to do with what with particularly with, um well, actually, I'm confusing my my sources, so that was for the senior center. Um but for senior vehicles, it has to do with what's easiest for for clients to get in and out. And the back of the cruiser, the back of the S U B is not always as comfortable or as easily accessible as a Crown Vic or a um. A main, so.
Yeah.
So, you know, the description is uh for a a senior bus, but it really is for any non-police officer. Transportation vehicle.
We didn't we spend our money on a.
We're we're good with senior buses for a while, but that that doesn't supersede the on any other non-police vehicle. So Alan, you owe me ten grand from somewhere.
I'm taking it out of the gazebo.
Sorry to say your math doesn't quite work that way.
I'm going by this, what was in my in my packet, it says ten grand in my packet, I don't know where you got these numbers.
I explained specifically where I got these numbers. All right, well, you know, the twenty-four seventy-two is gonna have to come out of Chief Carl, so he's, you know.
Yeah, I see plenty of places you can get twenty-four hundred bucks. Why are you gonna make me the bad guy?
I don't know, because you're talking.
Well, I'm just going, I'm kind of using as a guide, uh is, you know, the C I P's. Weighted value, right, that's a lot of work went into that, so if I'm gonna start. Disregarding the recommendations, I'm gonna whack away at the at the less valued things, right? So um I'd go up the line one more. And um you know. I I think that we could take a, well, you're you're zeroed out that already.
I didn't wait it.
You already zeroed out chip ceiling, which.
I'm sure that was also them.
Drainage projects does not look like enough as it is. And, you know, I'm always taking away from how it works, I'm not gonna. I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it up to somebody else, but do not touch a G I S.
Where are you still shy?
I'm twenty-four, but two thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars, right?
Oh, two thousand?
Two thousand. I already did.
You already zeroed that.
This is six of them, yeah, what, blue, blue is my worksheet.
Yeah.
Doesn't sound really familiar.
Where would you take it? Oh, we did our job, come on.
I would take it from the vehicle replacement program then, if we're, I understand it's for more than. Senior buses, but we seem to be in good shape currently, then I would take you from there.
That balances, by the way. It says what?
I can't read it from here.
It balances up, where that is, it balances up.
Okay. Gazebo's? Took away. A little bit from senior.
Have the vehicle replacement, what's the new number?
Vehicle replacement, uh twelve thousand five point eight.
Thank you.
We should try to get your second cruiser.
Yeah, I mean, uh how many, Jamaica, me, or was it two departments?
Are you good now?
Uh yes, it's balanced, yeah, it's good, I'm good, we just need a motion to to make these regular, make these appropriations, and then we're done.
Recommended appropriations.
Yeah, because it goes to Board of Finance.
Big motion, we uh approve the recommended Board of Selectman recommendations. Um to C I P. And forward them to the Board of Finance.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 opposed? Okay. I really thought this was gonna be a quick meeting.
Thank you to you and your committee for all your hard work, I know you spend a lot of time doing this, and I I do appreciate your recommendations. The time you put in.
Thank you, we do have. I think everyone on the committee is coming back for the fall, so we'll have a same group. Which is good for retaining knowledge and carrying everything over, and it's, it's a good functioning group, um pretty diverse, we have. Lots of letters after our names, R's and D's and I's and U's, and that never comes up into any discussion, so.
We feel the same way.
Yeah, it it's great when it works out that way, so it's a pleasure to lead them, and I'm glad this was relatively painless and. All the rationals I think made sense, so, thank you.
Thanks very much, Adam.
You got it.
All right, tax refunds.
Move to approve the tax refunds totaling one thousand two hundred and four dollars and thirty-four cents.
Second.
Uh all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Very. Um selectmen's reports, I don't have very much, I've been doing a lot of stuff that is either uh legal or labor the last couple of weeks, so. Nothing that's ready for primetime, um but I just want to say that uh I thought National Night Out on Tuesday was a great success. Um there was a great turnout, it was great showing from a lot of various agencies in town. Um and I left there with this real sense of like, of renewed pride and and reinvigoration in. Everybody just being together and having a good time, and and maybe that was in part that the weather was only seventy-five degrees and and, you know, beautiful sunny and. But maybe it was the the reflection of some uh some really positive things moving forward, either way, I thought it was a great night out. Uh and I'm glad to have uh have been a part of it, although I did spend time chasing around a a two-year-old and a four-year-old that. Didn't let me socialize much, but that that's really all I have, it's been relatively quiet, uh Marie's not here, so Sarah.
Okay, on July twenty-fourth, the Building Commission had a very short meeting, and there was no school or town updates discussed. Uh the Board of Education had a brief meeting on July twenty-sixth, which I was unable to attend, but I did follow up with the Board of Education member. And was informed that they had discussed their financials for the end of the fiscal year and expect to end the year in the positive. They also discussed a few resignations that were received and plans for the new school year. And on Tuesday night, I also attended National Night Out at East Windsor Park, we couldn't have asked for better weather. What really left an impression on me was having the Chief of Police, Matt Carl, and Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Patrick Tudren in attendance. I don't recall seeing anyone that held these positions at this event in past years. These two individuals are dedicated to our community, and that really showed on Tuesday night. It was also great to see Chief Arkary with the Broadbrook Fire Department and many members of the Warehouse Point Fire Department there with their trucks. The collaboration between the Police Department, Parks and Recreation, and the other organizations that attended. Was really remarkable, and it was great to see so many families in attendance, it was really a wonderful night for East Windsor, and I felt. Basically just how Jason did, feeling, having much pride in our community. I'd like to commend Melissa Maltese and the Parks and Rec Department for doing a great job in hosting this event again this year. And that's all I have.
Uh Terry.
Well, I'm gonna sound very redundant, because I too only attended National Night Out during the last, since our last meeting, but um. Yeah, the weather with attendance and music were all great. Um it's unfortunate that A H R C and B M X didn't get the same weather for their events when they were trying to have this. Fun, they managed to pull them off there that night uh by having the cardboard boat race in the reservoir, and they just picked. Ducks from, they had some kids blindfolded, and they picked ducks from the big tub, and people got their prizes, so the events went on. Um after all, and uh like. It is already been said, it was good to see so many departments and town individuals at this event, um it was a a good night.
Yeah.
Uh well, between uh work and personal uh travel, I contracted miss all three of my meetings since we met last. But I did review the minutes, and uh nothing big going on, but Wetlands did receive an application, probably the most significant out of all the land use stuff right now. Uh for seventy-four Newbury Road, which will be um fairly significant, it's uh gonna be trucking, so. Uh that will be heard next month. Um. Planning and zoning just had a couple, they closed a public hearing that they have to have when they're doing a text amendment, which. Was not a big amendment, and then they approved a a small application for a a subdivision, so nothing really to report there. And that's all I have for it.
Okay. Uh we'll turn now to public participation, this is a public second opportunity to address members of the board. If you'd like to do so, please identify yourself by your name and address and state your business, I'll turn it over to people who are in the room, and then give anybody online an opportunity, yes, sir. If you'd like to do so, please identify yourself by your name and address and state your business. I'll turn to first people who are in the room and then give anybody online an opportunity. Yes, sir.
All in, it's a maybe it means pretty probably. It's not a criticism, this would be observation. For National Night Out. Police department setup was accomplished by female officers. They did a fantastic job.
Well, performer of the male, self.
I didn't say that.
No, I didn't, you you what you mean by the setup?
Setup of their table and their display, everything, they did all the work.
There were male up on it.
They showed up later.
That's a great, that's a perfect conversation, and I was the one that showed up after all of them. So you're right, and I hate the criticism.
That makes sense.
I hate the criticism.
You use your best talents. Uh, but my other one is I understand that the splash pad has been a major issue.
What's the issue?
In that it's. Uh, the the pad itself is gonna have to be replaced, I understand, because. It is unsafe. It's so slippery that now people have to wear shoes to use it.
Always had to wear shoes to use it.
And, okay, well, I thought that was something new.
It's it's newly posted, but it it's always been, uh, manufacturers' recommendations also. Yeah, it's also, that's a curve of concern.
So it's not infected?
Uh, well, I mean, not anymore so it was as that has.
That's not what I meant.
It it's, it the the signage is is a liability protection.
I understand that. I'm just trying to understand is, it was the appropriate pad to be put down? Or are there other options, or whether the, you know?
This, this is the first I've heard of it, any issue other than um, the signage requiring people to be shoot, but. Uh, I can.
Oh.
Get you some information.
I didn't know if in general splash pads didn't have that requirement. And maybe they do, and if they do, fine, then that's the end of the story. But if in general splash pads don't have that requirement. Then why do we have to have it? Why was it installed in that manner? That's my question.
Okay, just a question, I don't.
That's it, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir, name and address, please.
A month ago, I'm telling you, I kind of set up plans, the scout hall. Uh, building over there, and uh, I reviewed those plans. And what problem I have is with the uh, runoff of the uh, parking lots. The elevation of the parking lot in front is same as the Abbey Road. The scout hall itself is one foot above Abbey Road. The rear parking lot is two foot. The whole below uh, the scout hall floor. The runoff for both those problems, both those lots, the parking lots, runs, I don't know where. Because there's no storm throwing trains showing it. These plans are certified by J R Russo dated October fifth, twenty twenty two. Building Committee told me that they had a present plans that they're using. The first plan shows remove all vegetation around the building, plus the generator. You look at the elevations. You. Side road on the south part of the property, or the west side of the property, runs from Abbey Road to the rear parking lot. That's a one foot grade from the front to the rear. There's no runoff for uh, in the winter time, the town does an excellent job of putting salt out. There's no catch bases for salt, oh, nothing for that. The property that's uh, on the west side of property is a prime property. The salt will run off into that property. I brought this up to the Wetlands Commission, they said they never reviewed these plans, they were never given a set of plans. One of the members of the commission said that they uh, remember walking on the floor over here, the water was coming up between the floorboards. When I was on the uh, Capitol Proving Committee, we have meetings over here, I used to observe the same thing. The level of that floor is one foot above the front parking lot. So I think the J R Russo was. In the error of not providing storm drains to take that rid of that the salt. On the firehouse down there now, I know in the winter time, the back parking lot is almost white after they put the salt down. And that's good for safety, we have storm drains down there to take that off. That. Uh, the Wetlands Commission said that they uh, never reviewed these plans or never given a set of plans. Is it customary for a town building to not be reviewed by the Wetlands Commission? I don't know. I should think they should have reviewed those plans. The elevations, that that was a wetland almost over there.
Wetlands doesn't review, I mean, unless they're asked to, and they're seldom asked to review, they're only. Look at it when there's an application within the hundred and fifty foot wetlands buffer.
And there's about there.
The chairman said she never reviewed plans.
Right, because if it was not in the hundred and fifty foot buffer, then it wouldn't have had to come to wetland, whether wetlands like it or not. So Wetlands doesn't, and and that's often an issue, which is, it's kind of weird, but Wetlands doesn't. Do anything with like parking lot runoff or stormwater runoff, if there's no wetlands in the area. That's all planning and zoning issues.
You're all wetland in the area.
It's the way, huh?
You're all wetland in the area, the last rain we had over there, that back parking lot was flooded.
Right, well, but that doesn't necessarily mean wetlands, there are wetlands all along the woods and where they propose to do another soccer field eventually is all wetlands and. And all that is wetlands, but where the building is. It would have to be one hundred and fifty feet. From the wetlands area, right? So it has to be within the hundred and fifty foot wetlands buffer for a wetlands application.
Property line from the building to the property line on this west side of the uh, property is one hundred and one foot.
Yeah, so I mean, it would be, it would be on the plan. The wetlands buffer, that that one hundred and fifty foot delineation will be on the plan if if J and J R Russo would be surprised if they messed that up. They usually pretty good at that, but I mean.
What about the top runoff for farmers' property?
That's planning and zoning, and and I know that's, doesn't seem, it's not intuitive, but if it's not involving, directly involving wetlands. If it's not within the hundred and fifty foot buffer to the wetlands, then wetlands does not get involved, doesn't matter how much water flowing across the property. It's, it's an oddity of Connecticut law, but planning and zoning would have to. You know, they'd have to explain that to planning and zoning, what the sheet flow is and and whatnot. And where the water's gonna go and who's gonna have to deal with it, that's all a planning and zoning issue.
Well, I think you've got a problem over there.
Uh, point taken, just. It it's not surprising that it didn't go to wetlands if it's not in the buffer, is all I'm saying, and I haven't looked at the plans recently, so I couldn't state that with any accuracy.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am, name and address, please.
Ah, George Roger, one oh one Reservoir Avenue in Brownbrook. I have a copy of the Community Investment Fund, which I can give to you, and uh, it states. Your response, whether the project required local inland wetland permits, you said a portion of the proposed activity will fall within the inland wetland public review. And you indicate that uh, you. Uh, the project plans have been presented to the inland wetland agent who indicated that no significant concerns with the project. And here I can.
Talking about reservoir, uh, did you say one oh one reservoir?
That's where she lives, yeah.
Oh, oh, okay, sorry.
Highlighted.
Yeah, so the inland wetland agent is um, in the in the office, it's not um. This is not, uh, did not go in front of the weapons.
Anyone else? Is there anyone online who would like to address members of the board of selectmen?
Do you want to speak?
No, no, I think you should look at it.
I have seen them. Uh, we will have an executive session, I would ask that include the Chief of Police as well. Uh, and there will be action to follow after the, uh, after the executive session. We have a motion to go into executive session to include Chief Carl.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are in executive session at eight oh two P M.
Progress.
All right, it's ten oh five, we're out of executive session, uh, we'll return to the call of the agenda and take up agenda item. Uh, eight A, the discussion of the South Road land lease increase.
Uh, authorize the first one to increase the um, master ground lease. From fifty six to sixty three per month. Um. Effective September first, twenty twenty three.
And provide notice?
And provide notice to those um, that still fall under this lease program.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Um. Onto agenda item nine A, discussion of the uh, M O U between Town of East Windsor. Um, and the Town's Police Union regarding retroactive private duty pack.
I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Town of East Windsor and the American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees, Local. Three, five, eight, three police union and authorize the first selectman to sign.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Opposed? So carried. Uh, with no further business to come before the board of selectmen, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Motion to adjourn.
That we adjourn at ten oh six?
Motion made by Alan, seconded by Sarah, uh, it's non-debatable, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned at ten oh seven P M.